Good evening, everyone. Please rise to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Present.
Alderman Logan.
Present.
Alderman Snow.
Present.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Present.
Alderman Shuneman.
Present.
Alderman Kleckler.
Present.
Alderman Folsom.
Present.
Alderman Sabaka.
Present.
Seven present, Eva Corm.
Thank you very much. I would just like to begin the meeting by telling Glenn Hope he's feeling better because you know as well as I do, he's sitting in the House across the street watching what we're doing. So how you doing, Glenn? Our first item of business on the agenda this evening is audience request. Is there anyone in the audience other than those that are on the agenda that would like an opportunity to address the council? If so, please step up to the mic, identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Chris Schmidt. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor, I just want to take a brief moment of your time. It's with the love and the compassion of my family that I am before you today as a candidate for the White Side County Sheriff's position. It's been a long and trying road, but March 20th is right around the corner and it's been a rewarding experience. If nothing else, it's allowed me as an individual to grow because I'm able to get here and to talk with you guys and to have that ability to share and to network and to grow as an individual is just way more important than whatever political ambitions or anything like that that are out there. Most importantly, a lot of politicians sit there and they say, "I, I, I, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that." Whatever the case is, they like to use the word "I." That's not my platform at all. My situation involves a matter of teamwork, just like you guys are seated here today as a team. My whole ambition is to increase that ability of working together with the Rock Falls, the city of Rock Falls, the chief police and the police department as well, and to drive that forward. Hence, the reason why my model for the sheriff's candidacy is working together and moving forward. That working together doesn't just include law enforcement personnel, it includes the citizens as well. And there's more important aspects out there. We can see everything in the headlines today that really raises our eyebrows, but it's a matter of us working together as a team to move things forward as far as our future, not for just us, but for our children that are coming up through the ages as well. That being said, I'll make it quick and I'll make it short, but I will entertain any questions or comments or suggestions that you guys might have for me as well. If none, I thank you for your time and you guys have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else in the audience like to speak this evening? If not, we'll move on. Community affairs, the chamber, you're not present. Next item is the consent agenda. There's two items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there any council members that would like to have either one of the items removed for further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of the February 20th, 2018 regular council meeting and approval of the bills as presented.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Folsom, to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. We have three ordinances for first reading only this evening. Mr. Clerk.
Approval of ordinance 2018-2359, amending section 32-1 utility office. Approval of ordinance 2018-2361, amending section 32-304 and section 32-312 sewer rates and receiving waste from private septic systems. And approval of ordinance 2018-2362, amending section 32-87 and 32-89 water rates and fire service.
Chair would entertain a motion for approval for first reading only for all three of these ordinances.
She'll move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Folsom, for the approval of the three ordinances 2018-2359, 2018-2361, and 2018-2362 for first reading only. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, first reading. City Administrator Blacker. Oh, nothing tonight, Your Honor?
All right. First of all, item number one is approval of the recommendation by the Finance Committee for the passage of resolution 2018-782, managed IT services from William &amp; Mary Computers, 812 12th Avenue, Rock Falls, Illinois, in the amount of $3,952 per month. And just so you know, that is for the entire city and that is split up by percentages as you can see on the back of their contract.
We approve 2018-782. Mr. Logan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Snow. Motion been made, second to approve resolution 2018-782 for managed IT services in the amount of $39,52 per month. Further questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Second tonight, Your Honor, is approval of the recommendation by the Finance Committee for the passage of resolution 2018-783, transferring $80,000 from the Riverfront Tiff to the Downtown Redevelopment Tiff.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2018-783.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Ms. Sabaka, for the approval of resolution 2018-783 in action transferring $80,000 from the Riverfront Tiff to the Downtown Redevelopment Tiff. Any questions? Roll call and Mr. Reitzel will keep himself.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Six aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask for approval of the recommendation by the Finance Committee for the increase in spending limit for city administrator and fiber net director to $15,000 each.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Ms. Sabaka, to approve the recommendation from the Finance Committee to increase spending limit for city administrator and fiber net director to $15,000 each. Questions?
Your Honor, just to add to that, I believe the Finance Committee said they'd like that reviewed after one year.
Maker and second, we had that phrase in the original motion that at the recommendation of the Finance Committee, this will be reviewed for one year. Thank you, folks. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Item number four is approval of the engineering services agreement with Willett Hoffman and Associates for the design engineering of Buell Road, 14th Avenue and 13th Avenue project in the amount of $22,700. I apologize, this is basically a housekeeping item. The engineering is complete and Willett just realized that they had never had us execute a contract for the work that they have already done.
We approve the engineering services agreement with Willett. Motion by Mr. Logan, seconded by Mr. Reitzel, to approve the engineering services agreement with Willett Hoffman for Buell Road and 13th Avenue project in the amount of $22,700. Questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Your Honor, the next is a two-step process dealing with some issues with the city hall and police, actually the fire department building. I'm asking for approval to waive bidding requirements for replacement of the electrical panels at city hall and the police fire building.
I make a motion to waive the bidding requirements for city hall and police fire building.
Second motion.
Motion been made by Mr. Reitzel and been seconded by Mr. Shuneman to approve the waive bidding requirements for the replacement electrical panels at city hall and police and fire building. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
With such council approval, on to your next one.
The next is the item to which you have just waived bidding for. You have two quotes in front of you from Complete Electrical Contractors of 215 West 14th Street, Rock Falls, for repairs to those electrical panels at city hall and the police and fire building in the amount of $46,580.
I make a motion to accept the quote from Complete Electric for repairs to the electric panels at city hall and the police fire building in the amount of $46,580 collectively. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you.
Last, but certainly not least on my list, this comes from both the Public Works Committee and the Finance Committee for approval of the agreement for solid waste recyclable materials and yard waste collection and disposal with Maureen Disposal, Inc., PO Box 158 Forest in Illinois, and authorization to the city attorney to draft an ordinance for the contract.
So.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Reitzel, seconded by Ms. Sabaka, for the approval of the agreement for solid waste recyclable materials and yard waste collection and disposal with Maureen Disposal, Forest in Illinois, and to authorize the city attorney to draft such ordinance as necessary for the contract. Questions?
I will say, I think our negotiation, anyone who came to those two meetings, I think I'm very pleased we'll be able to hold down the cost for our residents for garbage. We'll actually be one of the least expensive cities in the area. Maureen Disposal has been very good to work with and I appreciate them. They're here if you guys want to interrogate them about anything. I also have the totter out that this contract, that we'll be using for this contract, and I'm very pleased that we have it done and that we're going to have several months to educate our residents on the new curbside pickup with the totters. And everybody will be on the same page by the time this program starts the first of August. That's all, Your Honor.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. Any further?
I know I'm going to probably get some questions. If they fill a totter up, is with their, do they wait till their next pickup too if they have more garbage than what the totter will hold?
They have the option of purchasing, I have stickers from, for the solid waste town, $2 a piece. Those are, they're, 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 they're going to have two of those.
Oh, okay.
They're going to have one for recycling, they come to every little beach, and then more leaves a week, that's just, that's a lot.
Answers my question, thank you.
And we know it is a very different program than what our residents are used to, so that's why the education and getting all the information out to them. We have plenty of time to do that. We won't have to rush on any of the marketing and the education to the residents. So I think it, you know, we'll use that time wisely and try to get the word out to everyone.
So our expectation is in May, these new totters will be placed out then?
No, they will not. This program will not start until August 1st. We were scheduled to start July 1st, but because of the delivery of the new truck that you'll be using to pick these up, which is an automated arm, the driver stays in the vehicle the whole time. And so we're going to, and we have an agreement that we'll be bringing to you to extend the current contract for one additional month until this contract will kick in August 1st. So the totters actually won't be delivered until July, correct?
Probably, probably, because it has to be, because you like to deliver them, like for over stuff, you know, to, 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 to.
Do they deliver them to everyone's home, or where do they go?
So they, is, is this, well, are this town, we put cars out in, to be, in, probably, will actually be processed. So, it's probably, they deliver them, they, 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 you see them on top of the lot, they're very, very, very processed, very, very, very. Want to pick up, probably, maybe, 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 maybe.
Well, the residents have an option of purchasing an additional totter if they...
I, yes, yes, if they end up needing more, you know, fast, you, 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 normally, how that, so, you, 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 you.
We do have a few group homes here in town that do use more than one totter for garbage. And we've been, they've actually been using the totters for seven years, I believe, and we've been, they're set up on a separate contract.
That's all I have, thank you.
Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
That's all tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'm sure.
Mr. Ardini.
I have a couple items. I wanted to wish my son Philip a happy birthday today. I wanted to let everybody know that the ordinance license personnel and safety meeting has been changed to March 15th at 5:30 PM. And then the upcoming finance committee meetings for the budget discussions will be on March 27th at 5:00 PM and on Wednesday, March 28th at 2:00 PM. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
I just would add to that, this morning at the department head meetings, Mr. Simon cannot be here on the 28th. So those of you that would come on the 27th, which would be at 5 o'clock for the general fund items, we also will be doing at the end of that the electric utility one because he's unable to be there on the 28th. And it will be at the end of the general fund.
Who's the finance committee going to be canceled on the 27th?
That is finance committee.
Yeah, that's the finance, yeah.
We actually will do back-to-back finance committees two days in a row.
Mr. Sanders, as always, it seems to have to be again.
Back again, Your Honor.
Do you have anything to share?
No.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Perkins Dean's not with us this evening. He's under the weather, so he was advised just to stay away. And Mr. Cox, in here. Mr. Simon?
No, this way, sir.
Chief Nelson.
No, no, no.
Thank you. Gary?
Oh, I don't know.
Excuse me, Chief Goode. Mr. Siri, of course.
I'm looking for approval to purchase a 2015 Buick Encore from Majestic Motors, 1707 East Forest Street, Sterling, Illinois, in the amount of $13,750 as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Make a motion to approve the purchase?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Logan, to approve the purchase of a 2015 Buick Encore from Majestic Motors in the amount of $13,750. Further questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
No.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Six aye.
Thank you. Mr. Peddell. Thank you, Mr. Spinka.
Well, then, I, sir.
His head field.
I'm asking for approval of a 50 cent increase to $3 for the use of a credit debit card fees. And this would be citywide, too, beginning with the new fiscal year, May 1st.
Make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion been made by Alderman Snow, seconded by Mr. Shuneman, to approve the request for 50 percent, excuse me, 50 cent increase to $3 to the credit debit card service fees beginning May 1st. I think this comes about when we, we used to not charge anything and I think we were seeing anywhere from $24,000 to...
About $12,000 is what we were seeing.
Losses, losses. And then we raised it and of course, the banks and everybody else raised it, so now we're back on the negative side again, so it's necessary to keep up with it. And we do have a lot of our folks that do use debit and credit cards, unfortunately, but that's a good thing. Unfortunately, we have to offset that cost. So motion been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier, or Alderman Shuneman, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
No.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Six aye.
Welcome. Do you know?
I'm ready, sir.
Thank you. That's because, I'm sure that Ms. Blacker probably covered everybody's everything, so. Just because you're a late... Mr. Schaefer.
All right, board reports. Mr. Reitzel.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Logan.
Nothing today, sir.
Mr. Snell.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Shuneman.
Nothing from the board, Your Honor.
Mr. Kleckler.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Folsom.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Sabaka.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's down to me. Get comfortable.
Yeah.
Rather large print, though, so it'll go...
That's good. One of the responsibilities that the mayor has is to report on the state of the city each year, and this evening is the night for that. So I believe that city clerk put copies of my words out on your desk for you, and we'll go ahead with this. State of the city, dated this March 6th of 2018. Good evening to the members of the city council, the city administrator, city clerk, all the department heads, the city attorney, and you, the residents of the city of Rock Falls. I begin remarks this evening by sharing with you my wish that we continue our collective passions to work together by collaboration, communication, and cooperation, allowing us to craft a vision that plans for not only the here and now, but for the future of our city. My colleagues that sit here on the city council and I work along city staff, government partners, educators, residents, and the business community focusing on issues that have a direct effect and matter to all of us. Together, we strive to do what is necessary to strengthen our community and enhance the lives of those that call city of Rock Falls their home. In 2017, we achieved many milestones that in and of themselves are just stepping stones to a brighter future for our community. One that stands out immediately was our sesquicentennial and the week-long celebration of our community's 150 years of existence here on the south bank, the Rock River. That celebration allowed us to not only take a look back at our history, but also to look forward to what lies ahead. And the countless hours of dedication from volunteers and civic groups, churches, businesses produced a celebration that will long be remembered. In July, we dedicated the RB&amp;W Riverfront Park and witnessed the completion of phases 1, 2, and 3 of the park's design. We still need to complete the amphitheater, the water feature, the restrooms, kiosk, and at some time, the skate park. However, the work that was completed opened the door to opportunity, an opportunity for Rock Falls to create a vibrant waterfront district which combines nature, human innovation, and hard work, and most importantly, a community identity to serve as an active and dynamic community focal point. It would be hard for anyone to not agree that we saw that come to fruition during the sesquicentennial events and the other events that were held throughout the remainder of the year. And coming in 2018, even more events and opportunities for others to see what we have to offer will be there. The RB&amp;W Riverfront Park, in addition to the Holiday Inn and Suites, make the RB&amp;W District now prime for mixed-use redevelopment of equality and standard that is true to the history and the vision of the uptown and its many stakeholders and partners going forward. This revitalization has and will continue to improve the quality of life for our residents and at the same time, increase the viability of business opportunities in and around the uptown area, which in the end increases the quality and frequency of visits to our community by both our natives of our community, but just as importantly, from outside of our community, which increases economic opportunities as well. While taking the necessary steps to continue enhancing our overall quality of life, we maintain a vigilant focus on the city's ongoing fiscal sustainability. We've maintained a balanced budget. We've continued to maintain healthy reserves in accordance with our financial policies and invested in infrastructure improvement in both the electric, water, wastewater, and our roads. We continue to maintain fiscal stability despite continuous challenges from our own state government via mandates and unsustainable and unpredictable policy decisions. Even with the state finally passing a budget, municipalities are faced with continued challenges as the state looks to take more monies away from us via CPPRT and LDGF taxes, as well as administrative fees for non-home rule sales tax, to be able to use them for their own use instead of their intended use at the municipal level. You, the residents, continue to voice your concerns to myself and members of this council on our roads, and we know that you are not happy with that part of our infrastructure. Things are just not happening fast enough. I can tell you that no one sitting here in a position of leadership feels that we are anywhere near where we want to be with our road program. However, we are moving forward. The monies received from the non-home rule sales tax earmarked for roads and infrastructure are being put to good use, but we have a large list of to-do things, and it is going to take some time to get it done. When we started our projects, we were behind from the beginning. An area of continued commitment this past year has been in our continued diligence with our Brownsville projects. This past December, city administrator Blacker and I were honored to be asked for the second time in three years to attend the National Brownsville Training Conference and talk about our successes in the area of revitalization of Brownsville. A great honor was bestowed upon the city as such to all of the people who have been involved in our projects over all the years leading up to this award. The city of Rock Falls was named the Region 5 US EPA Award winner for outstanding contributions to Brownsville site redevelopment. It has been and remains one of the visions of the city to open up more of the riverfront for development. And to that end, and with the rekindled support of the Illinois EPA and our ongoing collaboration with the US EPA Region 5 team, it is happening. In July, we were able to see the 150-year-old limestone building come down. Sad as it was for many of us, it provides for another new beginning from an economic standpoint. The city has applied for and is waiting for the awarding of two cleanup grants, each valued at $200,000 to complete that project. In addition, the city has learned that it is one of three cities in Illinois to receive an $800,000 revolving loan fund award for further assessment and cleanup of the Parish Alfred property. The cleanup of both of these properties opens the door of unlimited potential for the developments to occur in addition to the RB&amp;W development south of the... to occur in addition to the RB&amp;W development south of the park, the Route 40 exchange development, which are invaluable to the future development and growth of the municipality. And lastly, starting March 19th, 2018, you will begin to see movement around the city as we begin to build out the backbone for the Rock Falls FiberNet project. Yes, it's coming. Rock Falls will become a gigabit city, bringing high-speed fiber optic internet to the home and business community with the same reliability that we provide with our other utilities. Our marketing tools are nearing final completion, and when they become available, you will be able to see the new face of internet services in the City of Rock Falls. This new service will provide the user greater bandwidth and speed of internet. A question that was asked recently was, why is this so important? Broadband is essential to innovate and thrive in the digital economy by improving economic competitiveness, enhancing public safety, expanding educational opportunities, improving government and citizen engagement, and to promote skill development and job growth. Continuing studies show that the access to high-quality broadband boosts property values and contribute to economic vitality. Fiber connectivity encourages businesses to stay. It helps businesses to grow and become more productive and attract new businesses, particularly high-tech industries. It supports home-based startup businesses and helps a new class of workers, which is still developing, to telecommute. It makes a community more attractive, especially for its young people, which can help to stem the population loss that many communities are experiencing. While fiber to the home is only one important component of the overall economic development strategy, it is a vitally important one. As we dive into 2018, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of our community now and into the future. On the horizon, great things are coming. We have people's attention, and they are watching what we are doing and waiting to see what is coming next. Thank you very much. The other things I have to report on this evening are the APP Legislative Rally, myself and Mr. Simon went to Washington, DC. Were involved in a lot of discussions on a lot of issues to do with the American Public Power. We had the opportunity to go see Senator Duckworth and talk to her about city issues and what we're doing here with our broadband, because she had a great interest in that last year when we were there, being on the Commerce Committee, and then we also shared with her our concerns on some of the APPA issues. We also saw Representative Bustos in her office, and we also had the opportunity to join a group of other people from the Illinois Municipal Electric Association when we went to visit Senator Duke Dervin in his office, and I must say, he's always very gracious. We were probably in there 30, 35 minutes, and if not longer, and in most instances, when you go to visit folks, and I thought that Senator Duckworth was very generous as well, and we got to see all three of our representatives, not just their aides, and that, that's a very important thing. It doesn't seem like much, but I, I will say this, that since I got to be mayor, there is an important significance to the elected officials from small-town America and big-town America to go and make that trip and actually sit across the table from them, because they, the representatives and senators, realize that we're from their state and we have a vote, and we represent people that have a vote. I thought this was probably one of the best years as far as the legislative rally went. There seems to be a much improved awareness with the elected officials in Washington as to the various issues that the APPA, which is our biggest voice, although we're part of the Illinois Municipal Electric Association, and I feel that is very... The last thing I have is that tomorrow is a big day here in Rock Falls. Tomorrow is the CGA Rock Falls Clinic groundbreaking that is scheduled for noon. Received word that parking for the event is going to be available at Selmy's, in the parking lot that is next, that they put in last year that's next to the greenhouses, and then walking over would probably be the best bet, and also learned late this afternoon that unbeknownst to the planners of this event, East Colom School gets out tomorrow early, so there's going to be a tremendous amount of traffic in that area. There are no crosswalks for crossing from the Selmy side, south side across, other than if you walk the sidewalk all the way up to the school and take the overpass, or there's a crosswalk there, so if you go, I would suggest going a little early, parking your car, and then walking down. Should be, from what the hospital is saying, a very short dedication type thing, so, but if you'd like to be there, you're more than welcome, and it's scheduled to start at noon. This is significant for the city. For years, the clinic has had previous locations where they've had a presence in the city, but it diminished down to just the clinic there as you come across the bridge, and they're going to be putting up a $3.2 million project that's going to take care of current needs and also allow them the expandability to have further specialties and doctors in this area, so it's, it's going to add to a lot of traffic out on the Dixon Avenue side, but also improve healthcare possibilities across the river, so we appreciate their choosing to come to Rock Falls very much. There is nothing this evening for executive session, I'm assuming you're correct with that, unless it's a big secret or surprise, so at this time, the chair would entertain a motion from Mr. Folsom to adjourn, and would ask that Ms. Sabaka second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks, very much.